States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Injustice for all.
Well done, all.
And a roll call.
It's the hardest thing to do.
Yeah, well done. Jenny, can we have a roll call?
Yep, Diane Dennis. Absent. Kathy Harris.
Aye.
Michael Nesbit.
Present.
Lois Tiley.
Aye.
Sarah Tiley. Absent. Christine Newman.
Aye.
And Richard Horner.
Present.
Thank you.
Brian Wendley.
Welcome, Brian.
Hello, thank you.
Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Do I hear a motion to accept and file the minutes?
I make the motion, we accept and file the minutes.
Lower second.
Oh, my God.
Motion, motion carried. Uh, any announcements or public comments? Apparently not. Move on to the prices engineering report. John, how are you tonight?
I am good. Um, do you have a copy of mine with you? If you happen to answer questions, we do have a letter of agreement in front of you for the drinking water asset management plan grant. Um, will be due to apply for that. Um, applications are due January first, 2021. And what you're looking for is, uh, is eight hundred thousand dollars to do the, basically the slot equivalent for the water system. And if you happen to answer questions, you can have.
Five. I can't believe I missed one that big.
Second from the bottom on page five, yeah.
Oh, it's so little, okay. And then we paid them some more last month too, right?
Yes, yep, we did two different payments.
Okay. So maybe they both showed up in this water thing?
It might have, the way the bank rack worked.
Yep, correct.
Yeah, because you have no cash, you didn't know the rest, didn't you?
Yep, Margaret, you had some money.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion to pay the bills in the line? That was by the last page.
Oh, Diane, that's yours.
They don't.
I thought he just drew one.
Anyway, do you have a motion to pay the bills?
Okay. Do you want me to do it? I, this is correct. Are you gonna do it, Lois? Yes. I'm gonna first do it for my, my, my Diane. I make motion that. Pay the bills in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, nine hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-three cents. Yes, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. That's what I thought, isn't it? Okay. Nine dollars and thirty-three cents. I suck at.
Chris, second question.
Do I sign on? You did it good.
All of us favorite. Good job. All of us favorite.
Yeah.
Uh, aye.
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 Opposed? No opposition, motion is carried. Uh, let's see.
For all the other people that are here, Diane Dennis always makes the, the thing to pay the money. Not sure why, but that's what we do.
So we'll know that.
We'll see if that year we're lost. Yep, next for Jack.
We'll have to do this. Next item on the agenda is the District Wastewater Resolution Twenty-Dash-Three. You have any explanation or anything on that, uh, art?
This is our, uh, this is taking our, our. House count member service in our contacts for, for the, the year, which it expires on, uh, December thirty-first. So it's, uh, resolution goes to twenty, twenty-four.
The resolution number twenty, twenty-four?
This petition goes through the year twenty-three, four.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
It's gonna be coordinated, uh, cause, uh, you know, the members of who will attend the meetings. And if there are changes or certified house count.
Okay, and is this, this is also, this is correct, does this also, um, say that we're going ahead and continuing all services we normally have?
Yes.
Or you've got a different one?
It maintains our member service, uh, information at current service levels at the, at the weekly and seasonal weekly rates.
Okay. Got it.
Any other, any more, do you have any ques- other question? Any question?
No.
Do I hear a motion to, to accept resolution twenty, dash, six?
Someone, this is correct.
Any support?
I'll support it.
Support Kathy.
Supported by Kathy, have a roll call with anybody?
Diane Dennis, absent. Kathy Harris?
Aye.
Michael Nesbit?
Aye.
Lois Tiley?
Aye.
Sarah Tiley, absent. Christine Newman?
Aye.
And Richard Horner?
Aye.
Mo- motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the second on the. Resolution Twenty-Dash-Seven.
We have Brian Wendlin on the, on the line.
Hi, Brian. Um, this is Chris. Where is the Benton Street Relief Drain?
So then, uh, Benton Street Relief Drain is the. Towards the south end of town, uh, between, uh, Cole Street and Hanchit Street.
Okay, that gully that goes down through, up there? That gully that goes down through the coal mines work?
Correct. That is correct. Yep, um.
Okay.
Outlet at the Bad River crosses under M fifty-two, goes in the east, uh, I think southeasterly direction over to Flint Street or Car Road.
Yeah. Okay, okay, now we're there. Okay, car.
So, so Brian, anyone else? So. This is, uh, this is brought to us there. Um, Brian mentioned he had several complaints of this kind. As of current, it's a nineteen seventy-seven drain field, uh, a drainage ditch, uh, and it's currently in chapter twenty, which Brian, uh, explained that that's a thing of the past. So that means the entire village would be assessed at large rather than, uh, a fifty-one percent occupancy. It's a great question on why, uh, you know, it's, um, I, I'm more apt to go at, after the Chesapeake, uh, drain that, uh, goes to the pump station that's a hundred years old. But, uh, Brian would be happy to explain what's going on and, and what his thoughts on it. Because apparently it doesn't have a drainage district.
Correct. Uh, it's hard to mention, uh, my office has received several calls, uh, regarding drainage concerns or the condition of the, of the, of the open ditch area. Uh, the lower end of it, it, um, crosses underneath the highway out to the drain, or excuse me, out to the, um. Out to the south branch of the Bad River is, uh, is actually a tile system, but as you get upstream, it's an open ditch. It's, um, again nineteen seventy-seven, so forty-plus years old now, it's full of trees, brush, and whatever else might have been left over the years. Um, and not, it's not functioning as it should. Um, and, uh, you know, we've got several complaints. Matter of fact, I was talking with my staff today, we actually got another call actually today, uh, from somebody different that's called in the past. But, um, when it's was constructed, it was, it had a drainage district, um, but nineteen seventy-seven. It was petitioned, uh, by the, the village to have some work done on it, um, under chapter twenty of the drain code. And, um, that work also included four other, three other locations within the village. And those four projects combined were called, uh, the St. Charles Relief Drain. Um, okay, yeah, with, with all these kind of separate subnames, in this case, the Benton Street Relief Drain, um, and that's where the relief came from, was, uh, part of the St. St. Charles Relief Drain Project. So we essentially got four different drains out there, all acting as, as one from a legal capacity. Uh, clearly they're separate drains and separate drainage areas, but, um, on paper, one drain. The way that that works under chapter twenty, any work done on those drains, um, the, the costs incurred by my office in doing so, uh, is billed, uh, essentially a hundred percent to the village. Um, as opposed to the, what, uh, most, to my other drains across the county are of the, of, of the twelve hundred drains we've got, probably fifty, sixty of them are, are like this, a chapter twenty. The remaining eleven hundred plus are, um, uh, were established under chapter three, four of the drain code, in which case, uh, as part of the project, we establish a drainage district. Uh, um, determining the areas that, that utilize the drain to drain into it. That drainage district then also becomes, uh, what we would refer to as the assessment district. So any work done on the drain at that time, um, uh, would then be, uh, assessed to that assessment district proportionally, uh, based on several factors. One of the, the largest factor being, being acreage for property use. That's the more common way of doing things, um, you know, back in, uh, you know, late eighties, nineties, and then back actually before the, with a little bit of a depression in late seventies, early eighties. But around that time, the, the villages of, of this nature, you know, like St. Charles, it was not uncommon to do things under chapter twenty because villages or communities had, had money. Um, and I think I have to tell any of you, that's not really the case anymore, is it? Um, so, so folks are, you know, communities are trying to get away from these things, they're trying to, uh, get drainage districts established and set up the assessment rules. And, and then, uh, ultimately let those that, uh, those properties or parcels that are utilizing the drain or benefiting. The, uh, pay the assessments for the work done on them.
Okay, now, this, this is correct, um.
Yes.
That drain goes actually from the river down to the boatworks, basically, the old boat.
That's correct.
And the top part of that up by Bell Avenue is high. And then the other part is low. Can I ask you where the complaints are at? Are these the ones that are complaining? Or is it the people up on Bell Avenue that are complaining?
Uh.
And where does the lower part drain to?
Uh, you, you lost me at Bell Avenue, um.
Fifty-two.
M fifty-two, sorry.
Gosh, okay.
Because it doesn't cross M fifty-two and go down to the river? Well, under M fifty-two to the river?
The, the complaint that we're getting are upstream of that, are between M fifty-two and, uh, and Flint Street or Car Road.
Right, and are they mostly from that Car Road side? Because I don't ever see any water up on the high spot.
No, no, I would, uh, I would say that the, the, uh, calls that we've received are all towards the more high, the path towards Car Road, uh, yeah, closer to Car Road than they are M fifty-two.
Okay. And that's a big low empty space.
That, uh.
Man, I notice the drain there. Yeah. And it's not flooding anybody's houses or anything.
I've not heard of any, uh, flooded homes, no. Um, what I am hearing is that it's full of trees and debris, and, and brush, and the water just doesn't completely get away, uh, like they would want to. You know, there's apparently stagnant water sitting in there almost year round. But, um.
Well, that's what I'm asking, it doesn't drain to anywhere, does it, that way?
It goes.
Doesn't cross Car Road and go over on the.
No, it actually drains the other way, uh, crest that goes underneath M fifty-two up to the south branch of the Bad River.
Well, I know that that, that low spot over by Car Road certainly doesn't go uphill. There's a big hill there, where the coal mines work. That water can't be going uphill. Unless those drains are terribly, terribly deep.
Yeah, I'm looking at, uh, looking at the light, our great data right now as we speak, and it, uh, it's clearly going to the west, yes. It's going to, it's going towards M fifty-two. Um, and the area underneath M fifty-two east through those first set of lots is always tile, the drain, tile drain.
Okay.
So it could be, could be relatively deep, it looks like the ditch is several feet deep, but anyway, yeah. Yeah, um. Uh. Yeah, it's, uh. Four feet, five feet deep in some areas through, through the kind of the center portion of it.
Okay. Because that's where the water seems to sit, it's down at that low end. On Car Road. Um, cause I drive down studio all the time, um. But it's just in the sloping part, I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, what does everybody else think? It's gonna be a lot of money, um, and it looks fun to us, and I'm not sure this one's worth it, um. What do you think, Harrow?
Well, I.
Make sure I'm on YouTube.
We have four options in the paper, I'm gonna be. You know, just to, to take out the trees only was approximately twenty thousand dollars. So options are keep it the same way where it's chapter twenty, where the entire village is assessed for this. Um. I believe our option two is a calculated risk through this rep- revolution, where we would petition the, and abandon and relinquish this drain.
Tony would write that.
Correct, to reestablish through the board, the board of determination and switch to chapter three slash four, which would set up the drainage or assessment district for just, for houses that would benefit.
Well, or I, I think one of the options is we could abandon completely the village home.
You know, village home, you know. I guess that's probably not, uh, the, the best alternative, but it, it, it is an alternative. Um, the other al- another alternative would be to, is, is, per just indicated, to get yourselves out from underneath that, uh, chapter twenty status and, and that, that hundred percent cost. We can abandon the drainage is, and then, then repetition my office to establish a drain, essentially the same location. Um, under chapter three, four of the drain code, at which point we would create that special assessment district that I talked about.
Okay.
So the.
This is the fourth option.
Uh, I don't know what I would want, please be honest with me. I, I guess not, just, or maybe do nothing, and, 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 and that, I think that's in our best interest, we've got issues, okay.
So, qu- Brian, just correct me if I'm right, but if we do the calculated risk and get to the board of determination and we're able to change to chapter three or four. The board of determination has yet to not allow your office to do something or change it, correct? When it gets to them, it's normally over and done, and, and we, we switch from chapter twenty to chapter three, four.
Uh.
No. Doesn't that mean that you can go ahead and do what you want, that you're going to assess the people that use it?
Correct.
That's the way, yeah, that's, that's the way the drain code operates, uh, just like right now, I mean, right now, I really should get out there and clean it now.
Right.
But that means I'm gonna be, well, that means that's a responsibility, though.
So let, let me, let me, let me clear, further ask. So towards fifty-two or foul, there, I believe there is a water line that would go underneath the road as well. So then would you be able to assess either M, M dot for that as well? Now, can we do that under chapter twenty, or do we have to be in chapter three dash four to do that?
Uh, that would have to be done, um, under chapter three, four unless it was, uh, uh, previously agreed to in, in our, I, I'd see that in, in the last of stuff, a rule from nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-seven. So, uh, short, short answer is yes, we, we would have to be, uh, under chapter three, four to be able to do that.
Okay, so if we re, we take the calculated risk and s- and s- go for switching, of the project that would now be assessed to the, the, the drainage. District of the homeowners in that area, what percentage do you think you could, we would potentially petition M dot for, just percentage wise, adjustment if you could?
Yeah, so that, that's a, that, it, it would just be a guess at this point, I, I, I hate to even guess. Uh, cause what, what I'm allowed to do is I, I, that's down in the county, um, uh, for, uh, what's called a fourteen A calculation. And that fourteen A calculation is actually the road right away as a percentage of the, uh, entire drainage district acreage. So I'd, we'd have to do some number, we'd have to establish the district, um, calculate the road right away, um, do, do, you know, a fair amount of work before I could answer that question for you. Um, but just eyeballing it. You know, I, I, you know, it could be five to ten percent. Anywhere in that neck of the woods, uh, the county would receive a small portion, uh, the village would receive a, a, a small portion, what we refer to as at large, um, generally in the neighborhood of, uh, of fifteen percent. And then the balance then, uh, goes to that special assessment district.
Okay.
And then that special assessment district is determined by either, I'm assuming footage on the ditch, is it?
No, uh, no, actually, the.
Is it by acreage?
And it, yes, by acreage, so what we would do, we would go out, um, through, uh, some, some boots on the groundwork and through our, uh, uh, light hours information into the jet I S system. Establish this drainage district, and then what it does is creates total acreage in the drainage district, and then it breaks acreage down by, by lot. Any lot or even flat that falls within that drainage district becomes liable for an assessment. And then, uh, uh, there are several factors used to create that assessment, um, acreage being the largest, um, it's one of the heaviest weighing factors. So a larger lot is a rule is gonna pay more because they're, they're generating more, more rainwater. Um, and then we also factor in, um, the, uh, the use of that lot. And the reason for that is, uh, um, in these examples, say a commercial or an industrial parcel or lot, as a general rule, is creating more rainwater, more runoff. Because they have parking, larger parking lots or driveways, larger roof areas, uh, more kind of curvaceous areas to generate runoff. So all of that kind of gets balled up into one giant formula, um, and then, uh, but anyhow, any.
So that's, my next question is, you know, you're obviously getting complaints from these people asking to do this work, but what? What kind of considerations do you take into account for their ability to pay? You know, I'd hate for a constituent to, you know, get assessed and then realize, I didn't think it was gonna be that much, or I didn't want to sign off on that anyway. Um, what kind of, again, what kind of calculation do you take to, you know, years, um, bill them out, things of that nature?
Yeah. I, I, I wanna start to lean on, on you folks and, and, and get, uh, what, glean what information I can, uh, because I don't, you know, you, you folks know the, um. The dynamics out there far better than I. But really what I'd, I'll do is, um, you know, we'll, we'll factor out the entire project cost, and, and we'll, we'll run a roll, or what I'll call a mock roll. And then we'll, eventually we'll back into, um, what an annual cost will be. So if we do a project like this, um, uh, through the drain code, I've got the option to, to, um, borrow funds or sell bonds, whatever is, is needed. Uh, and, and the repayment, I can schedule the repayment of that out, out to twenty years. So that allows us to soften the annual cost considerably. Um, so we're kind of back into that, in, into what is a, we would feel is a, a reasonable or affordable, uh, annual amount.
And, um, this is Chris again. If, um, if you're doing a drainage assessment, it's not gonna be just cut down some trees, right? If you're gonna fix that, I'm assuming it's not gonna be just go in and cut down some trees?
Uh.
I'm assuming you're gonna fix the drain.
If, if we go through this process, Chris, more than likely, we're gonna fix the drain, yes.
Right. So we're gonna come up with a number, and you're gonna come up with the assessment, and then at the end, if all those people go, no. Who pays the cost to you for what you've done already? Um.
So.
Getting ready for that.
Yeah, so let's, let's, let's talk about that for a second, um. To be very candid, uh, once we get to that point of establishing those types of cost, real costs, uh.
Yep.
The, I, I just, this is, this is gonna sound arrogant, I don't mean for it to, but it, it's, it's real. There is no saying no anymore.
Okay, there is no backing out at that point.
Yeah, so, you know, once we, we go through what's called the board of determination process, it's a board, uh, we, we have a public hearing, okay? And all of the landowners are invited to come in and, uh, uh, you know, uh, advocate for or against the project for whatever reason they want. The board of determination, at, at meeting, after hearing testimony, is gonna make the determination whether the, I can say necessary or not. And that, 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 uh, determination of necessity is based on that night, um, and it's based on, there's three, three triggering mechanisms I refer to them as, to be. Public health, public welfare, and public convenience. They hear anything that triggers those, they will, as a rule, find it necessary. We don't talk about costs at that meeting, we don't talk about project scope or project size, anything. It's, it's all about ensuring people are not flooding or being harmed.
My, how are people notified that, that the board of deter- posted in the newspaper for forty-five days or doing, you get a what? Other?
Uh, it's probably the most, the key component, uh, specifically.
People that are.
Okay.
Those that are inside. At the end, they're faded. I mean, you know, any, anybody that would be liable for an assessment?
How would those projects of gonna be? It could be, like you said. Is that what you said?
Yes, yeah, typically fifteen percent, uh, for, um, any, any municipality, yeah.
And then if we happen to have some extra money, now this is just a really obscure question, but we could actually put more into it to reduce the cost to the residents if we wanted to, you don't care. Okay.
You know, Ross, when I'm putting the roll together, and it's.
Well, don't tell him, I'm just telling you.
I, I already wrote it down.
Um, cause I know, I, I've done this before, I've done this before with water extensions, and. People back out at the last minute because they don't like the price, and.
Right.
I made them pay all the spicer and all the fee stuff to back out of it, but.
I see.
Um. I mean, I know it's gonna happen, they're gonna hear the price, they're gonna go, why did I ever pick? why did I ever pick up my phone? Um-
Yeah, no, exactly.
You know that's what's gonna happen, um.
Oh, I, 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 I can tell you, I'm dealing with one right now. What happens, we'll send, uh, depending on the project, four to six notices for every project. And we'll hear from a half a dozen people. And up until the point in time, we send a notice out saying, here's your assessment, if you'd like to prepay it without, depending on your interest, future interest, here's the cost. And our phone will ring off the hook.
Uh-huh.
And, and it's always, why didn't get the other notice? No, it's, it's, it's just what-
I know. I just, I just know how that works, yep.
Yep.
Well, my opinion on that, this is Chris, is we should go to the chapter twenty. I don't think the village should be liable. And I don't think we should take that on, because we have several other drains out there too. And, um, our, our drain money is just not overflowing here. Um, so I would suggest we undo the chapter twenty, petition for a chapter three or four and leave it up to him to do it. Up to, um-
I think that's probably the, the right way to go, both of us.
I just want to, as with that, with that point made, I, 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 uh, we're not trying to scare anybody yet because I, I don't have a say here, obviously, but I, I totally agree with what you said, that the village, it just doesn't have the financials to, to tell you what people are. But I wanna be clear with one little piece of this, it, it kinda got touched on.
Okay.
There is some level of risk here. Um, you abandoned the chapter twenty drain through this resolution that you're looking at there tonight. Um, I have one meeting to conduct after that before it's really final, but, um, it, it'll just be a formality if you go through this tonight. At that point in time, up until we go through a board of, uh, board of determination hearing, this drain is owned by the village. Not a big deal. I, I'll help you. I'll, I'll, we'll do whatever we gotta do. I'm not, okay? My, the, the, the risk is that we get to a board of determination hearing and it's found not necessary.
Okay, so then if we end up owning it, you can't then tell us what to do with it, right?
Nope, it's yours.
So we can decide to just do nothing because there's, there's legal records bad. Of the people-
Yeah. Yeah, once you own it, so you can do-
So if you didn't take the backup, we could just walk away from it too. I'm not walk away, but cut down the trees ourselves or do whatever and, um-
It's interesting to know.
Yep, it's just, it, it, it's just that you, uh, you- You, you own it per, to an extent.
Yep.
That, that would, so that's the risk, okay? That, that's all I just wanted, this is, uh, there is, the, the level of risk is you abandon what's there, we go back to the board of, uh, determination hearing and by, and just by chance, they say this is not necessary, that means that, that, that the village will own it at that point. I just wanted, I just wanna be clear about that. I don't want, I don't want, in the event that something crazy happens, I don't, I don't anticipate it, but, you know, it's not-
I still like that idea the best. Unless somebody there just wants to own and do nothing. People?
I kinda, I would kinda like to own it and maybe cut the trees down.
And do what they want it to do.
Uh, well then we'll have to assess them to do the rest of it. What else can we do? Well-
So is it, any, any, any damage or anything caused by the flooding waters, uh, 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 can't be possibly brought back to the village, Dana?
I can't, I've seen a floodwater down there in a long time. A long time.
But, but, Lois, if we then have to do that ourselves, then we have to pay Spicer again to draw up all the plan. I mean, it's gonna be very expensive, um, and it'll be the same thing that he's gonna do.
Yep.
Only we'll be the ones running it and trying to get it done.
Yeah, yeah, I understand what you're saying. Yep, I understand. Not a good idea.
I don't think so. Um, I would only think that's a good idea if like Mr. Wenling said, there was a clogging this somewhere and we ended up owning it. I mean, that would be like the worst case scenario. And then we just have to deal with what we have. But if, if they would pick it back up under chapter three and four, they can do special assessment districts. And, um, we can too, but I'd rather they do it. I mean, anybody who's ever done a special assessment district knows it's not fun.
Yeah, yeah. Same, Nick, huh? Yeah. I, I understand what you're not saying.
I, I still think that it's necessary and that it's ours as is, I mean.
But I, I have a choice just to take it.
Go ahead, Mr. Wenling.
If, if it were, if it were found not, not necessary and the village ended up with it, you can, uh, in, in a category, you're expires, uh, you can wait, repetition and, and try to, try to, you know, take another crack at it. So, uh, so there, there is, it's not-
And if it's not necessary, why would we have to do anything with it?
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
Oh, Mike, this is Chris. If it's not necessary, why would we have to do anything with that?
Well, I don't know that you would. Um,
Yeah.
You know, but there is, uh, there's, there's, you know, like anytime you own a, a piece of infrastructure, as you, you all know, there's, there's always some level of, uh, the next rain event. Yeah, yeah, no, there's no, there's no obligation to do, to, on your part to do any of those things. Uh, but that answers your question.
Yes. I still think that's the best way to go. I would rather get it, um, when we petition for a three, four, if they decide it's not necessary, then we'll take it and we'll just tell everybody it wasn't necessary. So we're not gonna do anything. At least we have something to back it up.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, if it is necessary, they're gonna get a supplement and we're gonna hear it. So be prepared.
Okay, I agree with you, Chris. I agree with you. Yes.
I, I would entertain a motion for the, the drain to fall with a roll call vote.
Okay, does this drain resolution do the change?
It, it does not. Uh, what that does is just a request to my office and at that point in time, I would, uh, I have a, a meeting with the county board chair and the finance director, I believe, or, uh, chair of the finance committee, who makes up the chapter twenty four, the three of us. Uh, so that'd be just a formal, formal meeting at which point in time, we could officially abandon it then based on your request. And, um, then I can- Correct. I can turn around and work with Hart. We can put together the, uh, official language for petitions to establish it under chapter three, four. Um, we can turn that around in just, uh, probably a couple of months, I, I would think.
Okay, so is this gonna be resolution twenty dash seven?
That is correct, yes.
Jenny?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty dash seven to have the county, you know, the drain commission abandon the, the drain, is that right? Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
This is support for the motion.
Yeah, solid support. Lois.
Part about Lois. Roll call please, Jenny.
Diane Dennis? Absent. Kathy Harris?
I support it.
Michael Nesbit?
Aye.
Lois Tylee?
Aye.
Sarah Tylee, absent. Christine Newman?
Aye.
And Richard Horner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you for your time tonight, Brian. We'll, we'll be in touch.
All right, John, it's great. Uh, thanks everybody. You bet. Good night.
Moving forward.
Brian, when we-
We now have a resol- We, we now have a resolution of a ten, twenty dash eight.
Everybody received, should have received an updated copy, I believe, round noon today. Eric is on the phone. This is to, the notice to intend to post, um, what we will be doing when we go after the bond council for when we go after the USDA rural development, uh, grant in the spring. Um, as you note in here, it requires four to five days after day of petition or notice, uh, in the publication. So I figure we probably should get this done now, uh, get it out there so that by spring we are prepared and ready to roll. Uh, Eric, you are still in line, I believe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything you'd like to speak to on this? Or any of the changes that, anybody might have questions for Eric regarding?
I can go ahead and just give a quick review of this.
How would they affect what was changed? I didn't think changed. I didn't either.
Just in the, the, the project description in the first paragraph on page one, and then the, the similar, the same description in the first paragraph of exhibit A, the notice of intent issued bottom. What I did is I added a little additional detail as to what types of improvements would be included, but without limitation, uh, within the, uh, described improvements. And, and the reason I did that is because, uh, that's more consistent with our practice than just leaving the simple, uh, statement. Uh, it provides a little bit more, um, assistance later on, um, when the projects, a lot of times projects will have changes in them and you'll wonder whether or not a particular improvement, it falls within the general description that you, that you started out with. So, uh, we go and do a little bit more detail, but without intending to limit it to what is listed there, uh, just so that it could, we have that, we have that flexibility.
Okay.
And, and really kinda just to defend the, the way the project moves forward, that each, each, each particular item of the project isn't-
Okay. Did I email two? Okay.
It was. It was sent at eleven fifty-four.
Okay. I didn't find my problem. Okay.
Unless I can resend it again just in case.
Hey, Hartman, this is Kathy. I didn't receive. All I received today from you was the, um, update, uh, the, the, the coronavirus cases.
Okay. Then let me get this out and make sure that everybody has it.
Next email, eleven fifty-seven.
Apologize if I didn't get there. The only addition, as he mentioned, including but not limited to the rep, three streets, rights of way and easements affecting the replacement of water service lines and facilities as well as all work necessary and incidental to these improvements. And that comes before effectively the project. So, uh, as he stated-
Okay.
-in greater detail. I guess it's done on that, but it looks like it, something might have happened.
No, not done. I'm looking for my phone. Bill, I have a new question. Sorry.
Done yet.
Not done yet, nope.
So-
Go back to my little cotty hole.
Other than the stated change, everything else, then the exhibit A, or, and the handout is accurate, the resolution.
Okay.
Again, this is our notice of intent published in the local, to object or resubject.
Uh-huh.
This is Eric. This, this resolution before you is, is the first legal step in obtaining financing for the project. The particular statute under which we're, we're pursuing the financing, Act ninety-four, the Revenue Bond Act, allow, will allow the village to issue revenue bonds, um, that are secured by the net revenues of the system. Um, and they'll let you do that, they'll let you issue those bonds without, uh, an election by, in which the qualified electors vote. But the trade-off is that you have to publish a note, notice of intent, saying that you're going to issue these bonds, uh, to this amount, six million dollars. It's gonna be for these purposes as described. And it's gonna be repaid from the net revenues of the petition for, the electors have the right to do that. And if, uh, more than ten percent of the registered electors in the village file a petition to the clerk before the forty-five day record and period ends, then you'll have to go to an election before the bond can be issued. Uh, so this, this has been a process-
I'm with that, yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, and so, once, when and if, uh, the council adopts this resolution, the resolution directs the clerk to have the notice published in a newspaper or general circulation in the village. Uh, and once that's published, then the forty-five day clock starts to run. When that forty-five day clock expires, at that point, you'll have the necessary authority to proceed to issue the bonds, once you have all the various project details worked out, the loan versus grant package worked out from rural development. And again, this six million dollars will be a loan that has to get repaid as opposed to the grant that John Olson was talking about earlier, which will be money gifted to the village to, to do the, the assigned, uh, improvements with. This will be a loan that gets repaid, repaid at a low, a relatively low interest rate through, through rural development.
Okay, and then if we decide to cut it in half like we were gonna do in the first place, we can still do that with this resolution in place?
That's correct.
Like do half of the-
Yes.
Get half of the project in the next half, the following year or two years or whatever it is?
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the other thing to note about this resolution is it states a maximum not to exceed principal, not for the bonds, of six million dollars. But that doesn't require you to issue six million. It only allows you to-
Okay.
-issue that. So, uh, you have flexibility within that six million. If you don't need it, you don't have to, you don't have to issue bonds for that or not. You issue, you issue bonds for what you need and, and that's what you do.
Okay. Kathy and Mike, do you have any questions?
Not at this time. This is Mike, not at this time.
Okay. This is to redo all of the water lines in town, or most all of them. Do you need a motion?
If it is for, no, first, first discussion, we need a motion for resolution of the ten, twenty dash eight.
I make a motion, repass resolution number twenty dash eight, authorizing publication of notice of intent to issue bonds. As updated-
I second, regarded. I second. Mike, nice bit of words, sir. Okay.
Uh, roll call.
Diane Dennis, absent. Kathy Harris?
Aye.
Michael Nesbit?
Aye.
Lois Tylee?
Aye.
Sarah Tylee? Absent. Christine Newman?
Aye.
And Richard Horner? And Richard Horner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, guys. We'll get you. See you soon.
Eric McLaughlin.
I did get them. I got it.
I resent just.
I got the redo. It's in my phone.
And I sent the redline version so you could see the exact changes.
Yes, this was the redline version. So, maybe I didn't get it until just now. I don't know.
Just now? Well, I didn't get it either.
Okay.
I haven't nothing else.
Right?
I haven't no, too.
Another resolution for funsies. And we have Adam Florrie on the line to speak to this one. This is prepared by the most, the most recent MDHHS and MiOSHA emergency rules.
Thank you very much, Hart. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having me at this evening. Me, evening. As Hart just alluded to, back on November eighteenth, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services issued what it labeled as a gatherings and face mask emergency order. The order relates to the village, largely relevant to the village's employment of employees. The order has many provisions, but one of which is that it prohibits indoor gatherings at any non-residential venue. The original order that was issued by the MDHHS, which again came out on November eighteenth, was set to expire on December eighth. But then on December seventh, a subsequent order was issued, which was the exact same essentially as the previous order, except it extended it through December twentieth. And so, at this point, through December twentieth, the order is still effective. And as I, as I said, the most effective ways that will affect the village would be, number one, indoor gatherings at non-residential venues are prohibited. So, that affects the village's ability to have employees work in person, and it also affects the village's ability to hold public meetings with its public bodies. So, as to the latter point, I would recommend the village as a general matter, either postpone any meetings between now and the twentieth, or hold them remotely, just as we're doing right now. If this does not get extended beyond the twentieth, then we could resume more normal business. If it does get extended beyond the twentieth, we'll likely have to maintain the same procedures we are now. And after the employee point, the order references the Michigan Occupational Safety and Health Administration, which is known as MiOSHA. The emergency rules that were issued by MiOSHA, among those emergency rules require all employers in the state, including municipal employers, to work policy. As you can see from your, what you have in front of you, I believe, our policy that I adopt typically straightforward and simply adopt the MiOSHA rules. The rules state that, to the extent feasible, employees must work remotely. So, that's sort of a decision that will need to be made on the ground, so to speak, as to whether it's feasible for a given employee to work remotely. And obviously, it may be feasible for a given employee to work remotely on some days, but not on others, depending on what tasks that employee is performing that day, and whether those can be completed remotely, or whether perhaps that employee doesn't have the equipment or something else necessary, and thus is required to work in person. So, as the resolution is drafted right now, it provides the village manager, Hart, with the authority to implement the policy on an everyday basis, so to speak, and to make determinations as to the feasibility of any particular employee's ability to work at home or work remotely. And it also states that it will continue indefinitely. But it, but it states that it will continue indefinitely until a further resolution of village council, or until the village manager determines it's no longer feasible or required. And I did that because if the, if the order is not extended beyond the twentieth, I didn't want to force the council to call a special meeting just to rescind the order. I wanted to be able to provide some flexibility. And, you know, vice versa, if the order is extended beyond the twentieth, I didn't want to limit it only to the twentieth, because then a special meeting would need to be called to extend it. And so, based on that, like I said, the resolution would continue indefinitely until the council determined it should be rescinded, or until Hart determined that it's, as the village manager, that enforcement is no longer required or feasible. So, other than that, I think that's the main high point. And as I said, as a general matter, for implementation of the order and the resolution, that's largely vested with Hart to determine the feasibility of any particular employees working remotely. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that there may be.
The only thing I have to say is I know that Jenny and, shoot.
Marguerite.
Marguerite.
Marguerite. They're working from home, and I have had no problem getting ahold of anyone. So, I don't think anybody else is either. They're answering their phones at home. Everything seems to be going well. And it's okay for the DPW workers working outside alone in a truck to plow snow, right?
That's correct.
That's an okay thing.
That is, that is absolutely correct. And that, I think, would be certain, that would certainly be work that cannot be completed feasibly remotely. And so, yeah, that's, that's exactly correct.
Right. Okay. Because all of them are mostly one to a truck anyway. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's working quite well, actually. Because we're already doing it, so.
Yeah, we've, we've taken the precautions in the past, and this is just to make sure we're in compliance. You know, there are some things I can't, you know, Marguerite can't do all the, you know, on Monday she comes in and grabs DPW time cards and things of that nature. But we try to limit our interaction with others, each other, and the general public in order for everybody to remain safe, but at the same time get our work done.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to adopt Resolution Twenty-nine? Or Policy Twenty-nine regarding COVID? Go ahead.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Twenty-nine, adopting Village of St. Charles COVID-nineteen employment policy.
I'll second that.
Is there support for the motion?
That's supported.
Motion is seconded. Thank you. Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Diane Dennis, absent. Kathy Harris?
Aye.
Michael Nesbit?
Aye.
Lois Tiley? Sarah Tiley, absent. Christine Newman?
Aye.
And Richard Horner?
Aye.
Thank you for those.
Good job, Lois.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you very much, Hart. Thank you to the members of the council for allowing you to be here. And I'll step out now, and I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Florrie.
Okay. Departmental report, DPW report. Questions on that?
Good evening, everyone. Can you, you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Now the lights on the gazebo again.
Yeah.
Great job, Doc. Great.
Very nice. That was really nice, too.
Received many numerous comments and compliments to your work on that, Don, and to the guys in the DPW.
I'm telling you guys, we're all just ready to get rid of the old lights that they bring in and take down and just use our own. You did such a good job.
The guys do a great job.
Apple trees downtown.
Those look really nice.
The guys do.
Yep.
What you got, Don? What'd you say?
The guys do a great job decorating everything. And they complain a lot, but they do have a good touch, so.
I didn't, I didn't want to say too much, but you guys certainly have some creative, creative juices in that department. So creative.
Some, some do.
It's no bad thing.
It's all Jason and Lutz.
He does have the touch, yes. He's easily under his direction.
He loves to do that. Because I used to look at things. And then in the, I think that sewer is a little thing about pole pumped, clean out, don't like east maple tree.
Yeah. That's.
Never mind.
Go ahead, Travis.
I think I know what that is.
It's, it's.
Should I plug up the sewer or something?
It's an ongoing problem all over the state of Michigan and the country. It's just, they say that they're flushable, but they're really not.
Okay.
So, and every, probably a dozen times a year, we have to pull a pump to clean it out.
Okay.
Anyone have any other questions on the DPW report?
Pave the Isco Road culvert cut?
Aye.
Kathy, did you see something?
Aye.
No, I see.
Okay. Pave the Isco Road culvert cut. Is that where that guy was still complaining?
Correct. Yeah. No, the culvert's been replaced and that's working fine. Other parts of the system are now, it seems to be an issue.
It's an ongoing problem, yeah? You're doing a great job, so keep it up.
Now, we're trying our best.
You might get this, you might get this solid Saturday. I hear.
Oh, you're, you're. We're as ready as we can be.
Okay.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don.
You're welcome.
Okay, Police Department report. Questions on that? I believe Julie's still there.
She is.
Julie, now, I tried this thing to the twelve days of Christmas. I think you could have worked better on it. Because some of them don't quite fit. Just thought I'd mention.
She's muted currently. She's unmuted.
Oh.
I'm unmuted.
Oh, good.
Well, we, I've just had a done. Add in a little holiday cheer and creativity. Well, I'm Ethan, apparently, there.
I couldn't quite make it fit, but.
Well, next time I was calling you.
Okay.
And they are true. We actually, we did have Fall Rock in November, and that's.
That's a lot.
Yeah, yeah, for, yeah, so, but Ethan absolutely getting done, and just love having the coverage in the village, and just look forward to, we did shop at the hero last week. Just continuing to connect to the village and even just the light we've had, just a tremendous response to the Christmas light.
Oh, good.
So, yeah.
And you made some money at Halloween, too.
Yes, that went right to the wildlife rescue team, and there was a little bit of blurb in there about them, but they take care of our, our dogs that are lost in the winter, and any mammals, any small mammals, they'll, they'll take them in. And they returned quite a few lost dogs last year, and they take care of injured animals on the roadway as well.
Now, is that, is that a lady that lives out west of town?
Yep, she's two and a half miles out Isco Road.
Okay. Yeah. And she does seem to all on her own?
Yes. She's certified with the DNR in her, I think it's kind of family affair, but.
Okay. Well, it's good we've got someone around that can do that.
Yeah, they are, they're very, very helpful and very connected in that community of, people know to contact them when they leave a pet, too. So, we just utilize her in that capacity, and even just a lot of the raccoons out in the daytime and things, she's gone out and prepped and taking care of some of that, so.
Good.
Any other questions?
No, but I wish, I actually wish that the kids were back in school.
That, that will.
Move on to the bill. Go ahead.
Don't F on that. That would be a good thing, would get kids back, so. We're with you on that.
Okay. Building inspector to report?
Hi, everybody. Scott Provo here.
How you doing, Scott?
Not going on, Eric.
Very good.
You had a little bit with Arbor Glen, though, huh?
Pardon me?
Complicated? Yeah, complicated?
With Glen Arbor?
Whichever it is. Arbor Glen or Glen Arbor.
Yeah, yes, there's, yes. I get it backwards every time. I think we have it all worked out as of this past weekend. I, we should be receiving a check for the permit fee. I'm hoping by the end of this week.
Good.
Permit fee's going to be a little over five thousand dollars.
Isn't that great? No, I didn't say that.
Yes, yes. And the improvements will be welcome. Last month looked pretty slow with my permits. I only had the one electrical permit, but the Arbor Glen will make up for that in the coming months, so.
It's going to make up for the whole year. Are you kidding me?
Pretty much, yeah. Under the complaints, number four, the ten fourteen North Saginaw, that's actually resolved. That fence has been repaired next to the Dollar General, so I think that'll take care of that. They've lost another section if it comes out, but they only repaired the damaged section. So, we may, we may hear a little more of that in the future. That's all I have right now.
Okay. Well, keep it up.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. I'll take care of the report. Is there any public comment?
I would just like to add that we made a offer of employment to Corey Heneman for the Department of Public Works. If accepted, he will be able to start December twenty-first. I did send you his resume so you can review. There was much deliberation on what we. I did send you his resume, so you can review. Uh, there is much deliberation on what we are looking for in that role, in that position. Someone that's willing to get in the, get down in the water main breaks and help out. Um, also, uh, Ricardo began his second stint in chemo, and, uh, he seems to be, uh, he's fighting and battling pretty hard, and he was, when I spoke with him, uh, he was in a good spirit, so.
Okay. Good.
Yeah.
The hard time in your life?
Hey, Hart?
Yes, sir.
How, how about, uh, this weekend? Everything all set up for the parade?
Yeah, we are, we're gonna move forward. We're gonna do what we can, uh, socially distanced. Uh, I had a call today, actually. Someone wanted to know, wanted to know if they could join the parade. And I kinda laughed, and I don't think they liked my laughing, but I would explain that. Yeah, you can be, uh, parade float number six, you know? Bring us, I mean, make, make the parade ten minutes. I'm in. Um.
Hey, it might, no, it might be a perfect night.
It, it might. It's been, oh, we've had, we have eight articles to raffle off. Thank you to, to Jenny Ross or Nesbit for, for purchasing and going above and beyond. Uh, thank you to Chief Church for donating a hundred dollars, John Gerber a hundred dollars, uh, the local church a hundred dollars, Walmart fifty dollars. So last year, we had six bikes. This year, we have eight. Um, we're gonna try to make it a Happy Holidays for, for some families. Hopefully, uh, some special kids will receive those, and, uh, it, it, it should be a, a, a nice evening, and hopefully it snows, and the tree looks, the, the tree, the village is beautiful. All the trees lit up and decorated, and a lot of families are so happy to get together outside and, and we see each other and, and do that. So, um, we're gonna try to keep the tradition going, so that next year it's bigger and better, and hopefully we can, um, you know, have a thousand people, but with masks on and socially distanced next year. Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Well, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry, everyone.
I'll see you all downtown, just kidding.
Your vote, your motion for adjournment?
Make motion. I make the motion adjourn.
Second.
Support?
Yeah.
How goes the favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Great work tonight, everybody. Thank you, Kathy, by the jerk.
All right.
Take care.
No.
Bye.
See y'all next year.
Oh, yeah.